Live on YouTube. So I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order March 31st, 2020, 6:30 PM. All selectmen are present. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the South Borough Board of Selectmen will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public indoor parties with a right indoor requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town of Southborough's website at www.southbrowtown.com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or participate in the meeting may do so in the following manner by finding the meeting at southbrowtown.com/remotemeetings. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on Southborough's website an audio or video recording, transcript or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. So with that, I'm going to go first to the consent agenda. We have two items there. First is to approve the open session minutes from March 24th, 2020. The other item. If I can find the right screen. Sorry. Is something that was added to the revised agenda pertaining to the MSBA vote for the Finn School Boiler. It's a vote that we took at a previous meeting. Town Council has since followed up with specific legal language that he would like included in a motion. So as part of the consent agenda, I will then move to authorize the town administrator on behalf of the town to execute the project funding agreement for the Mary E. Finn Elementary School with the Massachusetts School Building Authority for a total facilities grant and further to authorize the town administrator to make final binding decisions with respect to the proposed project on behalf of the town. Is there a second?
There is a second. Brian, are you moving item one as well?
I'm moving both, the minutes and that other motion as I read.
And I would second both.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Not discussion, just I'm recused on the boiler issue because it's got bonding implications.
Got it. All right. Would you prefer to vote them separately?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Any other discussions? All those in favor? Shay, aye.
Kalinda, aye.
Stivers, aye.
Healy, aye, as to the minutes and recused as to the Finn Boiler issue.
Okay. Next item, update on impact of COVID-19. One thing that I would like to do is several weeks back, town administrator, I'm sorry, town moderator made a decision after consultation with us and public safety officials to delay town meeting as required by Mass General R, as it's written now. And we're not within 10 days, but after a declaration to recess and continue a town meeting pursuant to this section, a local public safety official designated by the Board of Selectmen of the town in which the declaration was made shall submit a report to the Attorney General that sets forth the reasons why the declaration was made. So I would like to move that we appoint as our local safety official for this purpose, Chief Achilles, as the head of our emergency management of our agency to be the person to make this report to the Attorney General. And again, I don't think this report needs to be any longer than two sentences. I think it's well known why the delay was made, but still to be compliant with the laws, it's written now, we need to make that notification to the Attorney General. So I'll move again that we have Chief Achilles provide that report to the Attorney General.
I would second, Brian.
Any discussion on that? Shay, aye.
Stivers, aye.
Healy, aye.
Very good. Any other COVID-19 related items that members want to?
I do, Brian. I just have a couple of quick, quick items.
Yeah.
Um, I've had a lot of questions regarding if it's useful to do a reverse 911 just to reiterate to people the social distancing and physical distancing aspect, just as a reminder. I mean, I know everybody knows it, but it's still happening a lot. There's still a lot of groups together. I don't know if it's advantageous. I would think it would be, just as an additional reminder. I don't know what the board thinks.
I mean, I wouldn't be adverse to it.
Yeah, if the logistics makes sense, then I think it's a terrific idea.
Okay. Mark, is that something that we can coordinate?
Yeah, I'll coordinate that with the chiefs and with the DPW superintendent. And we'll work on that tomorrow. Again, it's, you want to make it so it gets the message out, but you want to make sure it's not too long, you know, so we don't lose too many people. So I think if we keep it to the social distancing and not getting as much into the hand washing and what's open and what's not and everything in that. So we'll try and keep the message succinct and direct to that.
Perfect. Thank you.
And Mark, you could reiterate, you know, information, daily updates are provided on the town's website as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a great idea.
So since you brought that up, Dan, so one of the things that we have been working on is, you know, obviously we're in this for a little bit longer haul than a couple of weeks. And the information that we've been providing, the public updates, you know, we've been putting them on the town's webpage, on a devoted COVID page. Unfortunately, it looks pretty clunky and it's really not easy for residents to find things. So Mrs. Hale, Mrs. Esposito, and Mr. LaFlamme and I have been working at revamping that, looking at what some other towns are doing. And again, there's no need to reinvent the wheel. We're just taking the good parts of their wheel and making it our wheel. So hopefully sometime in the next couple of days, we're going to be able to run out a, you know, a new COVID-19 update page with which will have informational links, which will post a lot of those updates. And I think it was something that Sam had brought up, although I loathe to call it a scorecard, Sam, but it is going to have, you know, updated information as to the number of positives. And I think one of the things that is important in the conversations with Leslie Chamberlain is to at least put the age groups, so people understand where the, you know, where our positives are coming from for the age groups and that. So we're going to get that rolled out. Again, it's a work in progress. We'll take comments, we'll take criticism and, you know, we'll continue to make changes as see fit. So I'm sure that will come.
Okay, Mark, actually, can I piggyback on that? That was the second thing that I was going to ask about. Is the Board of Health still set on only doing weekly updates? I think that's really tough. I think people are looking, it was a shock over the weekend to see what the numbers were versus maybe not every day, but maybe if we can find something better than once a week.
So I think that that becomes with the new page, Lisa, it kind of becomes a moot point.
Perfect.
Because it's going to be easier to be interactive and to update those numbers as we know them. I think you were the one that sent me something and said, on the day that we went from 6 to 11, Northborough went to 25, you know, and that was, you know, that was a real shock. So yeah, I think it's going to continue to be more real time than it is weekly. And if the next, you know, 10 to 15 days does what the governor and DPH thinks it's going to do, then, you know, that's probably going to be something to watch.
Okay, thank you. That's it for me.
Mark. That's good. I would also be in favor of, you know, the more frequent update, really, you know, the real time reporting of cases as they happen as opposed to once a week as well. So I think that's good.
Brian?
Yep.
Could I make a comment about that as well?
Yep.
Mark, some places are actually posting the number of tests that are done for residents. I don't know if our Board of Health has access to that information as well as the number of individuals who deemed recovered from the virus. And I think those are useful indicators as time goes on for people to get a sense of what's happening on a larger scale versus just the positive test results. If we have that, that might be worth considering.
I can check and see if we have that data. I will say that in the daily conversations we've had with Leslie Chamberlain, we don't have that information readily available. I'll see if, you know, what is our ability to get that. One of the things we did find in looking at some of these other sites where there may be more information, these are full-time Board of Health offices and you've got full-time people doing this. Leslie's part-time and is spending the majority of that time following up on positives, following up on contacts, following up on all of that, you know, stuff which, you know, I think is pretty vital, you know, to making sure that, you know, the patients are, we know what's going on with the patients, but we also know what potential contacts that they may have had, making sure that, you know, everyone is protected.
Yeah, if the state tracks that.
If it's available and that, I'll take a look at that.
Be useful to show, I think.
Sure.
Brian, I had a couple of questions that are related to what we might do relative to COVID. Is this the right place to ask those?
Sure.
One thing I saw that, and Dan knows more about this than I maybe, but I saw that the school committee has actually gotten an opinion that during the crisis here that they are able to sign documents electronically via DocuSign. And they had a legal opinion that says that that's acceptable, something we might at least keep in reserve around with the recent declaration of emergency thing to get signatures there. So if we could do that, that might simplify the process. Second thing is that the, I had a couple of you ask me about transfer station hours. And I heard that the school committee also is looking at ways to repurpose staff who are not doing their normal jobs now to find other things that they might do to be productive. Suggestion was made, is it possible to open up the transfer station on a couple of additional days? Because people are at home and have more opportunity to do things that involve the transfer station and more hours would actually spread out the flow from the usual crush on Saturday time to help with the social distancing. I don't know if that's possible, but it might be an interesting thing to take a look at if Karen and Mark would look into that.
Oh, I, maybe we can bring Karen in to see if she has a comment on that. But my discussions with Bridget over the weekend from a safe six feet distance away was that she was commenting on how light the crowd was on Saturday compared to most Saturdays. And I think because people are home more frequently, people tend to be, you know, maybe using it, you know, more routinely throughout the days that it is open as opposed to waiting until the Saturday crush. So.
Don't know, but again, suggestion was made, so.
Yeah, and I'll chime in if I may, you know, Brian, not, you know, I think that's a good suggestion to at least ask Karen if that is. Now, some of those operations, obviously dealing with the hopper, you know, that is a likely, you know, not an insignificant matter and someone that needs some significant, you know, special training for that. We don't want to have a mistake happen there. So, but if there are other things that could happen, you know, maybe that is a possibility that some Karen could look at, but and there could very well be other avenues as well besides DPW. But as far as electronic signatures, we did vote unanimously to approve that last night as a combined set of school committees. And that would be something I would be an absolute proponent for, for this board.
So while we're on this, if I did this correctly, I did move Karen over into the panelist group. So Karen, I don't know if you have an opinion on the transfer station component, if you're there.
Yep, sorry. Still getting used to this. As far as that goes, it's kind of hard to say. We really couldn't have them doing certain things. It would really only be up at the recycling center that we might be able to use somebody. And I just, we need to always have, we'd have to have a DPW person there. So I would prefer to just keep it the way it is. I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to have a DPW person come up on the Monday and Tuesday if we were open extra days. And the problem with that is that right now they can get other work done. So.
Is there training that those personnel need to go through to be able to like know how to run the hopper and all that kind of stuff?
Um, it's, it's a little bit, the training would be pretty quick. It's not very difficult equipment, but it's the issue of once, once everything's full, we have, someone from DPW is going to have to handle all of that. And that's really where the issue comes up more. It's, I mean, it's possible, but I will say we're still open 40 hours and it seems like 40 hours should be enough for, you know, 2,500 families to get there within that 40 without overloading it when most people are home.
Yeah, I was just suggesting that might be worth considering and, you know, maybe open for part of the day on Mondays or Tuesdays, not the full day.
Yes.
But again, not something for voter necessarily, just get on the list to take a look at and see if that's a possibility.
All right. Actually, while we have Karen here, why don't we go to that, the Mass DOT letter?
Hey, Brian, I've got two, Brian, just to bring it up, I've got two very quick things.
All right. There's actually a couple of other things I was going to touch back on as well, but go ahead.
Okay, never mind then. Go to Karen.
All right. So Karen had forwarded the letter to Mass DOT. Mass DOT would like to have this tomorrow, so hopefully we can finalize this tonight. And again, this is in reference to the accelerated bridge program that the state is planning for construction 2021. It's going to be a design build project. So there's, Mass DOT is looking for feedback from the impacted communities, I guess, on, you know, requirements that they want to include in that package that they give to the design build firm so that they can factor in any, you know, constraints or special concerns into their, into that design build team's bid and ultimate delivery. So the letter was prepared. Karen, I thought you did an excellent job with the letter. Mr. Stivers, I guess you had suggested, some suggested additions to that letter. And Karen, I think you've got some feedback on each of those as well. So Sam, I guess, why don't you go through the three top points that you wanted to include? And we can see if we're in agreement in adding those.
Okay. I guess one point was simply that I thought that some of the flow didn't work quite right. And so I did some word smithing on it generally.
So let's, let's just say the word smithing is accepted. Let's just focus on the three major points in that additional paragraph.
I don't, I, Brian, I don't want to say that it's acceptable because I liked Karen's words. So that may be your opinion, but I just don't want that out there that that's acceptable. It may be to you, but the others, we haven't checked in.
What, do we want to go through each edit individually? How do we want to do this? We can?
We may be here all night. Yes.
Well, we didn't want to be a two, two and a half hour meeting as well. So.
I know. It might be now.
So what's the process?
I think we're going to need to go through every single word because I will share that years on the board, I, when, when, when a, you know, a department director drafts a letter, unless there's something that is substantially wrong with that letter, I have shown great deference to the drafter of that letter. Everyone's style is going to be different. If I draft, it's going to be different than Sam's, going to be different from Mark, from Brian, from Lisa, from Marty, everyone's going to have their own style of drafting a letter. If the content is solid, and Brian, you stated right up front, you thought she drafted a very good letter. I agree. I think Karen drafted a very good letter. I want to ensure that, you know, she also has our backing, that it is, it is a well-written letter, different than Sam would write it, different than I would write it, but it's Karen's letter. And I thought it was well drafted and it hits the key points. You know, if we want to prolong this for another day, week, I mean, we'll all take a cut at drafting the letter. The stylistic points, I personally was not interested in. I thought Karen did a great job. I, the additional significant paragraph personally, and I'd love to hear from Sam, but I thought that was out of scope from what the letter was really intended to communicate. And, you know, if we want to provide them with feedback from what the public thinks about, you know, Sam put in, you know, commentary about bird droppings. Okay. We could talk all night about bird droppings. I have no interest in that. Or we could provide them with information that was provided from the public at a public meeting about what they would like to see that is likely out of scope. So I would actually like to move that, and we can still have this discussion, but I was confident in and happy with Karen's letter as provided originally to us in the packet.
Can I respond?
Yeah, so just for discussion purposes, I'll second Dan's motion. So let's.
So Mr. Chairman, I'm not, I think it'd be helpful if I could somehow show, I've got Mr. Stivers' proposed edits and everything up on my computer. I don't know if Tom is able to show my screen. I'm not able to find that here.
So, so I'll tell you what, given, given the time constraints that we're under with one of the members, could we just focus on the additional paragraph at this point to start? And the, kind of like three sub-bullet items within that paragraph?
Well, the letter's, the letter's up now.
All right. So can you scroll down to where that whole new paragraph is?
And Brian, can I speak to Dan's point?
Sure.
Again, my concern there is that the points I was making in that paragraph are not my points. They're the points that came out at the public meeting at the Fay School. And in fact, the Mass Engineers who were there making the presentation and taking comment seemed to be amenable to those points. And there were residents who actually cared about those and I thought they actually made sense. So I thought it was important to include the public comment in here as well as a comment from the official town DPW and other town entities. So that was why that paragraph went in. And to Dan's point about Karen's letter, Dan, I have no problem with Karen writing letters on her own behalf to whoever she needs to write to. But this is going out under Brian's signature on behalf of the board. And I think it's useful to get board input on those types of communications. So that's why I felt it was useful to.
All right. So let's, let's stay on track. In the, in the new paragraph that suggested the first point was in addition to noting the Corteville Road sidewalks, it also suggested work on sidewalks at Parkerville and Woodland Roads. Karen, do you have any? Are you okay with that?
Um, yes, actually, that, I think that that's good to add back into the, into the letter. There are no sidewalks leading up to the Woodland one. The Woodland Bridge is, no sidewalks near it, but it doesn't hurt to have them. I believe we need to change it to just resurfacing only because of the fact that there's no, there's no foundation or substructure work being done on the Woodland Road or the Parkerville Road bridges. So the width can't change. With that being said, to keep the same roadway base or roadway width, those sidewalks, they're not going to be able to bring them out and make them true sidewalks. They're more just almost like a walkway. And I don't think we'll be able to get more than that. They'll, if we ask for resurfacing or for, you know, the best rehab they can do, I think that, that's what will, they can't rebuild the, they're not going to rebuild that whole bridge. So they can't rebuild the whole sidewalk.
Okay.
Well, that's fine with me.
All right. So the next item was, was the bird droppings. So.
People who walk those roads complain about having to walk through the bird droppings, bird nests under the bridge. And engineering wise, it's actually possible to design bridges to mitigate the ability of birds to nest under the bridges. So if they can do that, I think that was worth putting that request in there.
And when I worked on the 495 Bridge at Simranor Drive with Cashman at the time, we did, we had, they had bird deterrents that were equipment, basically they put up. The design, it wasn't designed into the bridge. And that's, I mean, that's definitely something we can ask for. I hadn't thought of it. And I know the chiefs obviously hadn't thought of it. But that's, that's, those, those two things make sense to be able to just add in. We just added in as a short paragraph that it came, you know, that residents are interested in it. I think that's easy enough to include.
Okay. Then the last item, Sam Moore addresses the appearance of the bridge itself. And you note as an example, the bridge at the Winter Street crossing over I-95 Route 128. I don't know if you could offer a little bit more insight into that comment?
Yeah, again, I had a couple of people comment and it came up at the meeting at Finn School that the typical bridge is a basically concrete slab kind of construction. And Mass Dot is, in the past at least, done a more aesthetic looking bridge that people are going to have to drive under now for many years. And so the suggestion was made, can they do something to dress that up a little bit? And the 128 Bridge actually has a rail, rail on it and pillars that look nice. And I'd be happy to include a picture of that bridge if that would be useful. The engineers at the public meeting knew that bridge. Topic came up and they said, oh yeah, we know that bridge. So something there for nobody else.
And I can assure, as I travel under that bridge every single day that it was under construction on my commute to and from work in Burlington, I can assure you that that bridge was not done on a weekend.
Yes.
The way that this program is planned, that was at least a three or four year construction project. And we certainly don't have the luxury of that time from what Mass DOT is planning here. And I'm not advocating the construction of ugly bridges in any way, shape or form. But, I mean, the reality is they need to get these done within a certain timeframe. And I think that's going to limit what it's going to look like. And I don't know if, I don't know exactly how the process is going to work, whether, you know, aesthetics of the bridge is going to factor into, you know, a design build team's proposal that, or if there's a standard that Mass DOT is proposing that all teams are going to be, you know, asked to bid on. And I'm not sure.
I don't expect that we'll get much with that, but I think it's worth at least laying it out there to say that if we have a choice, it's useful to have that on the table. Maybe they can do something, maybe not.
Well, one thing with this, the letter, what we're trying to do is just to have, get, get our foot in the door so that the DOT can, can come and actually have a meeting with us. I think it's, I think for residents to weigh in. And when I had gone to the meeting at the Westboro Library on February 20th, the following week they were having the meeting at Finn and I had asked them, should we get out some flyers? And they said that meeting at Finn was going to be more of a meeting to about, about the traffic and what they were actually doing. They expected more people who traveled the Pike to come than necessarily residents. It wasn't based on information about Southborough in the project and how it related to Southborough. It was, it was more general about mass Pike work. But, I mean, I know residents came and they asked questions, but one of the things that I said, but I do think, you know, to the guy that, the DOT should come and speak to the selectmen and, you know, we should have a meeting. And that, they said, oh, absolutely. They can definitely do that. And that might be the time to ask something like that because there is no substructure being done on two of the bridges. So only the superstructure, so really all they're going to do is they're taking a bridge deck off and putting a bridge deck on. So the Parkerville and Woodland, you're really, they're not going to be able to do anything to it. The Corteville, there's a chance, maybe they could do something. And that would be through the design build. I don't think it'll be something that necessarily the DOT can put in the spec unless they could say, we want the bridge to be less heavy looking, but I don't know, like you can all, it's all subjective. So I don't know how they would do that piece. But we just want to make sure some of our ideas get in there so that they have to contact us about this work when they actually. when they actually are in the design phase. And that's what we want to make sure we get our foot in the door for.
Which is what I was trying to do here. So I don't, again, don't expect a lot for these, but if you don't ask, it's probably not going to happen.
So I guess with respect to these three items or what's the board's preference on whether to include the paragraph, not include the paragraph?
I guess my, I guess, I guess I have two reactions. Number one, I don't have an objection, um, to it, although the third one seems kind of, it seems kind of an odd, um, request in there. Um, and I mean, it's, on the one hand, the reason you have the public session is so the public can weigh in. So Mast DOT already has that. But, um, more generally to the, to the point Dan raised, um, I, I don't like to operate this way, which is at four o'clock before a meeting to get a significantly, um, edited draft of something. Um, and I really don't want that to become the way we operate. Um, so I guess I'm with Dan on leaving the letter the way it was originally written and I saw. Again, if I edited it, um, you know, extensively, it would be different than either Karen did or Sam did. Um, but if we are going to have significant edits to a document, I really would like to see it really early. I mean, I drafted a couple of policies and, and, you know, tried to get them in ten days before. So folks had an opportunity, um, to, to, um, to consider them. Um, and this is the second time this has happened in a couple of weeks. I really don't want it to become our practice.
I will agree.
I agree with exactly what Marty and Dan said as well. But again, I would wordsmith it. That was one of the comments I made is I would wordsmith it differently as well.
Brian, I think we have a motion on the table.
There is a motion. So, so your motion was to accept the letter as written by Karen, correct?
Correct.
And so I will.
I, I will, I will offer an amendment to accept the, the, um, letter written at, by Karen um, with three very abbreviated, um, bullet points, um, shrinking dramatically the, the additional paragraph that's, that Sam wrote. And I will leave it to Karen to do the wordsmithing on that paragraph.
Second that.
So Marty, I could say, like you said last week, I'm not changing my motion.
I move to amend it.
I'm, 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 I'm fine with that, Marty.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Shay, aye.
Kalenda, aye.
Rashi, aye.
Heely, aye.
All right. Thank you all. Karen, thank you. I appreciate your joining.
Brian, are there any other matters to be voted on tonight?
Uh, I don't believe that there are any other matters to be voted. I was good, now I'm going to go back to, um, the COVID nineteen related items and then go to, um, public comment after that.
Okay. All right. As stated previously, I have a commitment that started four minutes ago and I have to pay attention to that. Uh, important call, so I will, um, sign off.
Thank you.
Stay safe, Dan.
Thank you all.
All right. So back to COVID nineteen related items. Uh, Mr. Healy, you had a couple of items you wanted to note?
I do. One is, um, uh, representatives of South Bros Community Fund, which is something I was very unfamiliar with, uh, reached out to me, um, to Mr. Shay and, and, um, Mr. Purple. Um, I had a conversation with two representatives of the community fund and, um, hopefully without objection from anyone. Um, uh, what, what they are, what, what the community fund is trying to do is to, um, marshal, uh, resources in coordination, um, with the town. Um, uh, so that, uh, if and when, um, residents of South Bro might need, um, some bridge financial assistance during the COVID nineteen crisis that to the extent, um, possible that that bridge financial assistance, um, for, uh, miscellaneous expense, expenses and the like can be made available. They've reached out to the, to representatives of the town to, um, um, have a dialogue and possibly an informal, um, working group so that the potential for those resources can be enhanced to its, um, fullest possible extent. Um, in my conversation with them, I told them that I was happy to, um, play that role and attempt to do the coordination. And if there's not objection from other members of the board, I will, uh, attempt to do that.
Marty, I would just say, um, I know that the Council on Aging, Youth and Family Services, um, has funds that come through the foundation. Um, and I know they've had conversations with them as well. So you may want to also speak to them to know what their position is and what they've already asked for.
At least you're, you're absolutely right. And that would be, uh, um, um, I would view it as, as, as trying to bring as many parties together to have a conversation about this so that, so that no one is acting independently when they might work better and uh, more effectively working in coordination. That, that's, so you're absolutely right. That, that would be my, um, um, hope in doing that.
No, and I think that's great, Marty. And I think you're wonderful to step up and offer to do that.
I think that's a great idea too. Marty, are you suggesting that the town might actually find additional funds, uh, to serve this purpose as well in coordination with the community fund?
Um, I, I don't want to go that far. Um, um, uh, these are, these are nonprofits who in the past have made resources available to the town through Youth and Family Services and the Senior Center and the Food Pantry is, as, um, as Lisa mentioned. Um, but the town plays a role and to, to, um, um, to make sure again, that, that the left hand is working with the right hand, is working with whatever third or fourth hand might be available. So that, again, these are, these are potentially tough times for an awful lot of people. And to the extent, um, assistance might be able to be made available through whatever source to do whatever we can to make that possible.
And particularly with grant money, um, I've, the federal debt, debt disaster declaration, I think opens up some possibilities. I've been looking at small business loan, uh, programs and some of those are available for five oh one C threes. So working with the community fund and, and town efforts to find sources of grant funding, emergency funding near, I think could potentially free up some resources to funnel in those directions. So that's.
Yeah. And talking with Mr. Mr. Purple, um, just very briefly this morning. I mean, the, the town is already undertaking various efforts and there's coordination. It just, there are additional parties here and um, I just want to make sure that everybody's talking to each other. That's all.
Yep, agreed.
Sounds good. Thanks for doing that, Marty.
Um, the second thing is, and it's kind of a, a follow-up to, um, the action we took last week. Um, um, about the track at, um, Trotter. Number one, I drive by, um, almost every day just to check in. And, um, Ms. Brascio's instincts, um, were spot on. Um, it is being, um, regularly and sometimes heavily used. But, um, from my observation with, um, uh, appropriate social distancing, uh, in effect. Um, so that's the good news. Um, the not necessarily bad news hopefully is, is the, um, and I'm relying on, on, uh, um, um, secondhand information primarily through, um, uh, the My South Pro website that apparently, um, uh, the ability for folks to use Chestnut Hill Farm um, is not available. Um, and, um, I'm not ready to make a motion now, but I, I think our next meeting, if we can't get some clarification for why that's the case, um, it's a resource that should be available to the town. It's wide open spaces. And, um, uh, uh, maybe Mark, I'll, I'll put this on you, maybe to have an informal conversation with somebody from uh, the, the trustees organization and get some clarification as to, as to why with appropriate social distancing, we can't be taking advantage of that resource the same way we are the much smaller Trotter track.
Sure. I'm happy to follow up on that, Marty.
And Marty, my understanding was that that was exactly the point is that the, the crowds were showing up and making it difficult to maintain social distancing. So it was sort of a crowd control issue is my understanding, which.
I know. Sam, I have hard, a hard time believing that, again, having seen what's going on over at Trotter. I mean, people are walking that track and they are being appropriately respectful of social distancing. I can't imagine the same thing can't be done at Chestnut Hill.
I, I agree. It should be possible. Apparently it wasn't for a while. That's what concerned.
And I'll say Marty too, you know, I'm over by Breakneck and even when the parking lot was full and cars were parking on the streets, people were adhering to the distances. You saw very few people other than families, you know, that live together anyway, but you saw very few people just stopping and congregating and talking unless they were a good distance apart. So I think people are being somewhat respectful of that.
Yeah. And I think it sends a very bad message to have that resource that obviously the town had a pretty significant part in, in, um, um, taken care of, not being available to town residents during about as critical a time as you could possibly have.
Agreed.
Now, particularly with the governor's order extended to May fourth, we're really going to be getting into some good weather where people will want to get outside. And that's a great resource for people to be able to utilize.
Right. So Mark, you'll, you'll, you'll follow up and report back to us?
Yes, I'll, uh, I'll get you something in the interim between this meeting and next, and then we can publicly report at the next meeting.
Terrific. That's all for me.
Okay. One thing that I just wanted to point out, I've been asked by one of the volunteers at the South Borough Food Pantry, just to put out a quick word. Um, just to let people in town know that they're continuing their vital work of neighbors, helping neighbors during this difficult time. So I hope everyone continues to support the mission and don't be afraid to reach out if you need help. You know, there's certainly, you know, in these times, certainly could be new clients that, you know, could potentially be taking, it'd be very helped, uh, helped greatly by the service that the food pantry provides. Uh, so if there are new clients, you can contact the food pantry by email. South Borough Food Pantry, all one word, at gmail dot com. You can also be reached by phone at five oh eight four eight five four eight five seven. Just wait for the pantry prompt and then leave your name and phone number. Uh, for current clients, they're in this changing environment. They just want to make sure that everybody's aware that there are new hours and a new procedure. Uh, the new schedule for the food pantry is Tuesday, I'm sorry, Thursday evenings. That's Thursday evening, six thirty to seven fifteen PM. Friday mornings, nine thirty AM to ten fifteen AM. They are not open Tuesday evenings. Uh, by four on Wednesdays, please provide a list of the needs by email, again, at southburofoodpantry@gmail.com. Um, be as specific as possible, uh, including if you need more than one on an item. Give the two preferences for the meat that you'd like. Earlier your order is placed, the better your chance of getting your first choice. Uh, and again, for those who wish to donate, a list of their current needs may be found on their Facebook or webpage. Food and paper goods can be dropped off in the bins outside the back of the pilgrim church. Uh, they will be quarantined for a period, uh, to be sure that they're safe for distributing. Checks and gifts can also be made out and mailed to the food pantry post office box two eight one uh, South Borough Mansel one seven seven two. So just ask to pass that message along and just want to make sure everybody is aware that that resource is available. I know, I haven't heard, Mark, I don't know if you have, whether the lit, uh, Senate and the House and the governor came to agreement yet on that bill for assisting communities.
No, so the.
Et cetera.
Yeah. So the, um, the Senate amended the House bill. Um, and I believe that that has to go back to the House now for a vote. Uh, so that's going to happen, um, I believe tomorrow. And, and then, you know, it may be later tomorrow or the day after when the bill is finally signed. So either, you know, Wednesday, Thursday this week, hopefully that bill is, is, um, is law.
Okay. So once that is enacted, I think it would be worthwhile to, and maybe at a meeting next Tuesday, uh, yeah, next Tuesday, uh, we can have Mr. Semino, Aldo and now Mr. Hegarty involved just to discuss town meeting. You know, obviously we're in the, it's currently scheduled for April sixteenth. Again, we took all the actions that we could in accordance with law to, or the Mr. Semino did to move it to, uh, April sixteenth, but certainly I think that is going to have to be revisited. And once we have this legislation finalized, we'll be in a better position to have a meaningful discussion on, on town meeting. Uh, likewise, um, you know, at, at some point in time, we can't lose track of the fact that we're going to have to have a discussion on the town election as well. I'm trying to figure out how we're going to get that in before, uh, June thirtieth. And last thing I just wanted to touch upon, um, Mark, I don't know if you can just give a, maybe a quick update, not only to the board, but to those who may be watching as well, where you think we're going to come in budget wise for the current year FY twenty, whether you're not, you see any impacts with the current fiscal year. And then, you know, I think we're just going to need to think about, you know, whether we need to make adjustments to the FY twenty-one budget that was recommended previously in light of everything that's going on. Everybody certainly acted in, in good faith, unappropriately at the time, but certainly world events have changed. Uh, maybe how we want to look at next year's budget as well. So if you could just give a quick update on those two items.
Sure. So, um, kind of a loaded question. Um, uh, I was having, um, the conversation with, uh, Brian Ballantyne earlier today. And I think, um, that, um, probably, I, I'm not sure if we're going to do these meetings weekly now. That's how it's been going for a couple of weeks. Um, but either the meeting on the fourteenth or the twenty-first, I think, um, both Brian and I can give a, um, a little bit more of an update in terms of talking about twenty-one, um, and twenty, but I, I'll, I'll, I'll speak briefly and broadly, I think. Um, in terms of the budget that we're in now fiscal twenty, um, you know, we have frozen all discretionary spending. Um, and quite honestly, you know, no one's going to conferences, no one's going to meetings, no one's going to training, no one's really leaving town, um, for anything in that. So, you know, that, that is a good thing. We're making sure that people are simply paying salaries. And we, um, are, are any expenses that are required, you know, in, in order to, um, to keep things moving forward in this new normal, um, that we're dealing with, with the pandemic. Um, for fiscal twenty-one, uh, I think that, it's, it's an interesting, it's an interesting situation. I, I agree with you, Brian, that we put together, you know, I think a very responsible budget, you know, um, I think the board kind of went over, you know, what the, uh, finance director and I were recommending, um, to shore up some of our operations and put some additional people in places that, um, that were requesting them. Uh, and I still think we were able to do that responsibly. That budget, um, actually increases our, uh, unused levy capacity, believe it or not. And that's assuming that the capital we defer to the fall all gets passed as presented. And, you know, uh, you, you've got the capital, um, uh, planning committee who's going to be taking a look at that. So I wouldn't say that that four eighty-five is going to come through as forty-five. But even if that does, we still are, are putting some money away in our unused levy capacity, um, for that. We're not in a bad position for twenty-one in terms of, you know, we, we have, uh, two potential revenue pieces that we're going to have to take a look at. One of them is, um, you know, we, we are assuming that, um, that the town meeting will pass the local, um, option meals tax. Um, we're budgeting about seventy-five thousand dollars or about nine months of what would be expected based on the estimates that, um, that have been provided to us. I, um, Kathy Cook Advisory had done some work with that. Who knows what's going to come out of this, um, of this situation in terms of restaurants and everything. Um, you know, we, we just really don't have any idea. So that money is a little bit suspect. Um, we bumped up our investment income a little bit. Uh, I think that could be very suspect. Um, so we'll have to take a look at those things. Um, uh, I think I had mentioned in a conversation earlier, um, this week with, with, um, with Brian and possibly also I've mentioned it to Marty. Uh, if you saw in the papers, the town of Natick, um, you know, uh, they have a local meals tax. Uh, and their local meals tax, you know, uh, they were reported, that's about four million dollars a year in revenue. That is a huge piece of their building blocks for their budget. Um, they're not getting four million dollars. So they've got to go back and take a hard look at their budget. Taking a million dollars or two million dollars out of their revenue stream, you know, could be very difficult, um, for them. Um, so I think we need to look at this. You know, you've added in some new positions. I think the value of the new positions and the benefits, you know, equates to, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, is that something that you want to, you know, to take a look at? Um, you know, at backing out for this year, you have taken a vote to not add any new hours or positions in fiscal twenty-two unless there is new and identified revenue sources to support those. Um, That may be something that you have to revisit, um, if in fact you were to do that and you still felt strongly about some of these hours and positions. That we're taking out for twenty one. I think some of those things will be on the table, but again, we don't know when. We're getting back to, I keep saying getting back to, you know, what we were used to. I don't know that we get back to what we're, you know, to what we're used to, I think it's going to be a blend of of, you know, of some of the things we may be doing now. And some of the things we were used to um, before the pandemic hit and a lot of these restrictions were put in place. But um, I I'd like to have an opportunity, I think, for Mr. Ballantyne to come in um, to one of our meetings, probably, like I said, on the twenty first. If that ends up being the meeting date and and talking a little more um, a little more specifics about some of these things. And and maybe putting some things on the table for consideration. That help?
It does, thank you. Any other items folks wanted to bring up related to this topic?
And I just uh, add one final thing for me, Brian. I think on, two things, actually, I just like to remind people that um, you know, our local restaurants in town are still open. And um, they are, most of them have signed up for some form of delivery uh, service. Uh, as well, so if we could still support them, whether it be through gift cards or um, actually doing takeout from them, I'm sure that they would greatly appreciate it. And I would just like to end by thanking all of the essential people deemed by the state, the nurses, the doctors, the nurse practitioners, the people that work in the grocery stores. Just everyone in town that is still continuing to work, uh, that are putting themselves on the front lines, I think we owe them a mountain of gratitude. And I would just like to share that.
Thank you.
Could not agree more, Lisa.
Yeah, agreed.
Anything else that people have?
Not for me.
Nope.
All right, so the one thing that I had done is, and there was a note that I had sent around earlier. Mark had posted it on the town's website that I did. Open this meeting up for public comment. Again, that's, I think we're going to be looking at not only our board, but all boards and committees looking at Zoom meetings for for the, for quite a while. And just wanted to see how we could introduce participation from the public into meetings. And before we get to a meeting that had a highly contentious topic, I thought that I would. You know, ease in slowly to it and see if folks do have a comment that they wanted to raise tonight. I see that we do have eleven attendees in addition to the six panelists that we have, so I guess now for those that are. That have joined and are um, participating in this meeting as an attendee, if there is something that you would like to offer. If you see that raise hands button on the on the screen now, feel free to to click on that and I'll see if I can recognize you. And if I do, go to you, if you could just please, um, again, similar to what we do for public comment at. Our regular meetings, state your name and address, and and we'll go from there. First, Chelsea. Chelsea, can you hear us?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
I can barely hear you, if you can crank up the volume or get a little closer to the mic.
Can you hear me now?
That's much better.
Okay, so Chelsea Malinowski, Juan William, Caleri Lane, um, I'm a member of advisory, but we have not met on this. So I'm speaking as a resident, um, and I just wanted to go back to some of the points um, regarding the financial impact of this. And I firmly believe that it is our responsibility to present to the public a revised FY twenty one budget. Uh, we're looking at unemployment of thirty percent right now, we have companies that have already announced no raises, no bonuses. And I think it is our our duty to show the public what loss of services would exist if we had no increase to the FY twenty one budget. And give, give those residents um, the opportunity to take a look at the at the multiple options. The other thing, uh, comment that was made earlier about um. Leslie, um, the the nurse being involved in providing data to the public. I think we need to look to see if there's another opportunity to get her some help if um, if we have the funds to do so. I think that would maybe alleviate some of the work she's doing and and um, give the public more information.
Thank you. Anybody else with public comment? Brian Donovan.
Hello.
Hi, Ryan, can you hear us?
Hi, so my name is Ryan Donovan, I'm a non-resident, but I am the director of the library. Uh, I just want to thank you all uh, for meeting and for all that you do, I don't think you get thanked enough. And you guys are great, um, I did, if it's okay, just wanted to plug a couple things we're doing. On the library side, if that's okay. Um, so we're going to be sending out a big April newsletter tomorrow, uh, so I just wanted to let residents know if they're not subscribed. To our e-newsletter, now is a wonderful time uh, to to get on board with that. And we're going to be offering um, a temporary card that we will mail to residents so they can access digital resources. We're also adapting our uh, new library seat exchange into a mail order service temporarily. So these are sort of resources and things that you can access uh, with regards to library services, just while people are at home. Over the next month.
Great, thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Anybody else with comments? Going once. Twice.
Last chance for controversial topic.
So, well. Success, the system works and it's very easy to use, so that's um. It's a good uh, it's a good little test run, so that, thank you, everybody who did join uh, as an attendee and thanks for those that made the comments as well.
Well, Brian, I also think that what your your instinct in doing this was spot on, um, and um. You know, if it's two people, if if it were seven people, I just think giving folks the opportunity to to weigh in is important, so I I. It was a, it was a good call on your part.
Well, I appreciate that, but again, it's team effort here in doing it, and special thanks to Tom for. Doing all the support behind the scenes to to make it all happen and. If I can do it seamlessly, that means he did a tremendous job on his end, so. Uh, with that, I will move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, Shay, aye.
Rashia, aye.
We are adjourned, thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, good night.